Touch our leader, our leaders, touch our superintendent, all of our board members, all of our friends, all of our stakeholders in this community. And Father God, give us the power to deal with our children in a tactful way. And I pray, praise you, Father God, for your anointing. I praise you for your delight that you're allowing us to live. And when we are here tonight, Father God, let us do things decently and in order. And I praise you for it in advance, Father God. Bless all of our teachers certified and classified. Bless everybody that make, that makes up Coffee County School System. And I'm thankful, Father God, that in this night, let us be on one accord, let us strive for the advancement of our lives. And as you give us the breath to breathe every day, let us do our best every day that we see the sunlight and even let us pray to you when the sunset comes. In Jesus' most precious name we pray, amen.
Yeah. Can I make a motion to adopt a agenda? Any changes?
No, sir.
You got it all over there?
Yeah, that will be on the regular meeting, but we'll get to it if we work through this.
Can I make a motion? Mr. Wayne?
Second.
Mr. Preston, please.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a school update to start our meeting tonight. We have Mr. Lee Mobley and some of his staff here with him to give us a presentation and an update on what's been happening at Satilla Elementary School. So, welcome, Mr. Mobley.
Thank you, thank you. We appreciate you guys allowing us, and ladies allowing us opportunity to come brag on our kids and our school a little bit. I have a couple of staff members with us. We have Ms. Rich, our assistant principal, Ms. Felicia, our former counselor and now dean of students, and Mr. Brandon Bush, our academic coach, our parent coordinator. And the reason I asked them to come, because a lot of the slides we're going to show you tonight, they spearheaded, implemented, and made happen. So, I didn't want to stand up here and tell their stories. I wanted to give them the opportunity. But we know you guys have heard from most of the schools this year, probably have had a lot of data, a lot of intents, information to process, but we're going to spend tonight just a few minutes bragging on Satilla kids and teachers and some of the things that we've done over the last couple of years and hope to continue doing if we can get past our current situation. But as we show you these slides, we'll basically tell you what we're doing. So, we kind of view a lot of what we're doing as building bridges. And these slides that you'll see coming up are just, our goal is to connect our families, our school, and the community and just hopefully point them towards success. All these are not academic in nature, but we're trying to build a whole child, which is our, our fourth goal that we work towards, is to build that total package kid. And I hope what we're doing is making a difference. So, I'm sharing this for that teacher. Ms. Amy Polk at our school, about a year and a half ago, came up with the idea to create a Moms Club and to bring our moms out and empower our moms. And you'll see, connecting moms to lead, learn, and laugh together. And what she did was, she established a night for moms, and we had several each year, where moms come in, they fellowship together. And at first, the first meeting, we led the moms in a lesson, or we did, and I didn't get invited because I'm still a little bitter. But as we led through the upcoming meetings, mom began, moms began leading. We had a mom do a whole session of couponing, and she led other moms in how to do that. Then we had a mom come in and we, we did some cooking, we did, we did all kinds of things, or they did. And it became a, a great event our moms looked forward to, and they felt a connection to the school that we leveraged to bring them back in the door later for other activities. And we think it made a big difference. We hope to continue this. We may do it virtually for a little while, but we hope to get back face to face. But just props to Amy Polk and her team for putting that together and following through with it.
And she really tried to make it where it wasn't like, I'm Ms. Rich that night, but I was Nate's mom that night, you know? And so, it was kind of like, no name tags, no titles. It's just we're all here, we're all moms as Satilla kids. And so, it was really pretty special that night. The first, especially the first one, just to see that, because we've seen relationships grow through that. So, it's been really cool that, you know, I'm just Carla that night and just able to connect with parents in a different way, so.
Thank you, Ms. Rich. Another thing we did, and this has been a few years in the process, and Ms. Felicia had a key role in this, but we developed a school store. And our goal was to create an environment where parents, families could come in, even people in the community that did not have children there, if they're in a time of need, they could come shop. And it's Dollar General, so, I don't know if you can hear me there. We did hear recently that somebody told Mr. Matt Baker across the street that Dollar Generals were popping up everywhere. He heard one was at Satilla Elementary. We didn't, we didn't argue it, so. But anyway, our store has home goods, school supplies, clothing, food. So, when our parents come in, they shop. And we feel like it's been a success. Again, it's been Ms. Sermon's baby. But when we've had parents who've come in and taken advantage during hard times, some of those same parents have come back and even donated supplies months later and kind of given back. So, it's kind of paying it forward. And we also allow our children to shop here with their, their school money, their Bulldog Bucks. And we've had kids, there is a toy section, but we've had kids, countless kids, come in and say, I want to buy some washing powder, I want to buy this. And we just felt it was really cool, you take a kid, and that's real money to them. Instead of a toy, they wanted to contribute to, to family. And that's a win for us.
And I even had a kid that, it was right before Mother's Day, and I tried to get jewelry and stuff like that with Fine Chief and put in there. And he bought some stuff with his mom for Mother's Day. And she called me and thanked me because he was able to buy something for her for Mother's Day with his Bulldog Bucks. So, she was excited about that. And we had it set up just like a store. I have a real cash register and, and I bring them up and I give, put it in a bag, a thank you bag, and they go out and they are just happy with that bag. They're trying to make it seem like, you know, a real store. And then I make them count their money to me before they leave.
So, if you're looking for something, just run out into other stores, give us a call and we'll work you out. I can guarantee you, Ms. Sermon's has a store.
And we've been really fortunate through this because we've had community partners, faith-based groups, and, you know.
A former fourth student actually started the process that led to this by donating food through her, her project she did as a senior, so.
Even like Verizon Wireless, they came out and saw the store and they donated. And People's Pride, some of their representatives came out and they donated as well, you know, and told us anytime we needed anything, just to give them a call.
Yeah, good, good partnership. Our next area is our school garden. A lot of schools have their school garden. And Mr. Bush worked with several teachers as well as students to kind of put a spin on our garden. And recently, we took the crops that we grew originally. We would grow the crops, our kids would eat the crops, our lunch ladies would, would cook. Well, so what we did recently was, our students grew the crops, harvested the crops, and delivered to shut-ins in our Satilla community. So, they were able to see the whole process. They were able to work the garden. We worked the science side of it, so they understood. But then also, Mr. Bush worked with them to identify and deliver to some shut-ins. So, we were kind of helping them to invest in their community. Because our kids and I think society in general, they think, what am I going to get? What am I going to get for my efforts? So, I think it's a great lesson, Mr. Bush taught us, you always are not going to end up with something in your hand, but maybe you'll end up with something in your heart. So, you want to share any more about some of that with the kids?
What touched me the most was one of the shut-ins right next door was Ms. Adaham Berg. And she, she was really touched when we came to her door. She didn't want to open the door for us. We had to call Shay or Kyle to agree to open the door. But when she did, she wouldn't let our kids leave. She just loved on them. She, she just took those vegetables. She wanted, she wanted us to stay so she could cook them for us. I mean, it was a special moment for those kids.
Yeah, it's been, it's been cool. So, they're all now deciding what they're going to do next, next time in the garden. Another area we've done, and this has been a long process, but we've started going out into our communities for the last four or five years, especially during the sermon we made trips out. We were able to, to get a snow cone trailer, a vending trailer, and we logoed it up. So, we go out into the communities. And what we realized is, in the South, y'all know, quickest way to the heart is through the stomach. So, as we go out and deliver snow cones, we've been able to build some relationships and connect with some parents that maybe don't feel comfortable coming in the building or their schedules don't allow. And we've taken it throughout the community over and over. We've done books out of the trailer. Mr. Bush has taken it to some local events, a dog, the local dog show he set up. We did free snow cones. So, we've been able to do this, and now the community's kind of, they get used to it. So, now we have to Facebook out our map. We're here, we're coming here. So, we nearly break Facebook on the days we go out, but it's, it's been a lot of fun. It's also been one of the best ways we've found to immerse brand-new teachers into our Satilla family. So, when we hire a teacher in the spring, we try to make sure those new teachers are in a car, in the trailer, walking the streets. And by the end of that day, they're part of the Satilla family. And that first day, they're not a new teacher, they are a Satilla teacher. So, it's been a great tool that we've used a lot, a lot of ways. And, and we really thank the, the folks that they didn't want to be named, but they helped us get the trailer and get it logoed up so that, you know, when we're in the communities, it's versus Tilla. I will say, one day, we were in the community and this car chased us down, because we don't care if you go to Satilla or where, when we're giving out snow cones. So, I went and grabbed our snow cones and I came back and she was on her phone and I heard her say, girl, I swear to God, the snow business, I ain't giving them away for you. And I didn't even argue, I just laughed. That's probably more famous than us. But it's been a great tool to meet grandmas and community members and we've been out.
And new families.
Yeah, new families.
Moving into the community. We met several this summer when we were out.
Yeah, we've been able to bump into city workers, get to know them, commissioners who are out in neighborhoods. So, it's been a lot, a lot of fun on top of, I think beneficial for our school. And then our last area is trying to instill in our students the importance of volunteering, investing in others around you, and again, trying to do something that you're not going to get an immediate return on. And Mr. Bush, again, has been a key player with this, as well as Ms. Sermon's with our Imagine Me Girls, Mr. Bush with our gifted kids. So, we've gone out and Mr. Bush, you want to share a little bit about y'all's project with the animal shelter?
Sure. We, we call it Passion Project. And it, it started on the dry rest board of what can we do now locally? And it went from, it was around Thanksgiving and there's a lot of food thanks collecting, put your soup can in your mailbox type thing. And our school decided, or at least kids decided, we'll raise food for the animal shelter. It became a school-wide thing. The kids made commercials, they made posters, they sold it to their homerooms. We had over eighteen hundred pounds of food that we delivered. And you can kind of see it lined up against the wall. And the animal shelter, just as a reward for the kids, brought a litter of puppies to the whole school. And went down the hallway and shared with everybody. So, it was, the whole school got rewarded for that.
Yeah, some teachers were holding some new family members, too. Also, Mr. Bush coordinated multiple trips to some of our senior living homes and took several groups around to play games, do exercises, arts and crafts, had a, had a really good time, got a lot of good feedback there. And then Ms. Sermon's did the same with her and Sherwin Williams and their team with their Imagine Me Girls, were able to take them out and, and get into the community again and with some of our seniors that may be not able to see family and their grandbabies and great-grandsons. But that's been good. And our goal is to continue these and get back to these as we hope and pray conditions improve with, you know, the freedom to come and go in some of these establishments. But we could keep sharing, but I know y'all's time is valuable. Really, what we want to do is spend time just bragging on our teachers, bragging on our kids, and making sure, you know, that, that everybody knows it is so much more than just reading and arithmetic and, and science and social studies. We're trying to build the whole child and win. At the end of the day, when we see a kid in fifteen or twenty years, if they're a mathematician, that's great. But if they're a great mom, a great dad, a great community member, somebody who contributed, that's a huge win for us, as well as, as all of us in the room. So, thanks for letting us brag on. And see if I have any questions about any projects? Want to make a reservation to shop? All right. Thank y'all so much for allowing us to share.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Ms. Mobley.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is the CTA budget and local needs assessment. And we have Ms. Rhonda Dorsey, our CTA director here, so welcome, Ms. Dorsey.
Good evening. You'll find, I hope that you're there on your chair, see a little gift from our CTA department, the calendar, and help keep up with lots of activities because we are an extremely active group. And if you see my calendar, it is like, oh my gosh, where are they at today? And if we, hopefully we'll continue to be able to go and, and do, and things will hopefully get better across the board. We have some disappointed children as we speak. Their event got canceled that's scheduled for two weeks out already. So, we have a few that are already kind of disappointed. So, say a prayer, things will, will be better for us as far as our groups go. But with that being said, I have the budget that is our federal dollars that we receive each year. It is a little less this year with our Perkins Improvement Grant. It's across the state is less, and also with us, our MTE dropped in CTAE. And part of that, we've contributed and we found that that's happened with our initial academy. When we moved into our academies, it made students have to identify what are my interests, where do I really want to go? So, it was a very strategically placed group. And with that being said, this year we had where we're able to add additional CTA courses for kids who have finished that pathway to continue within that pathway instead of jumping to a different pathway. And so, we're trying to strategically place those students to where, for instance, if I'm in Ag-Mech, I go and take my basic Ag, Ag-Mech 1, Ag-Mech 2. We've now put in Ag-Mech 3, metals and fabrication, so that those students can continue on in an area of interest. We're doing some of that same type of things with our healthcare science. With our teaching, we're trying to put them into our interning. So, we're trying to, in each area, add some additional courses beyond that one pathway. So, those numbers should be back up next year, but we do know that we, and they told us in Nashville, that would be that initial, once you guided students into an area and that's their focus, those numbers across the board would probably drop and then should come back up. So, we hope to see that number back up this next year, or this year with our MTE camp. But across the state, they did tell us that there was a drop in all funding with our Perkins Improvement for all schools. You'll also see our additional funds that are there to cover our extended day, which those are state grant funds for our Ag, as well as our CTA teachers that are at the high school level. And what we're asking for is for this to be approved and that with the, match the grants, the funds with the local funds, it would be a dollar more than that Perkins Improvement amount of the ninety-one thousand eight hundred ninety-nine there this year. And I think you all also received our Conference of Local Needs. These are our goals that years and guides where we spend these dollars and how they are to be spent is to focus on these goals. And these were created two years ago. Every two years, we revisit the plan and change those goals if needed or continue with those goals if we don't feel we've met them and they still need to be addressed. So, currently, this year, we had actually our first advisory board meeting this morning. We're pulling people from each of our advisory groups in addition to any parents. We'll have students, we'll have teachers, county office personnel, different ones that will form our committee, that will revisit our local needs assessment, where we look at data, student interest, community interest, the needs from our employers to help guide where we need to take our courses as well as areas, if you'll notice some, as far as like our, our, what we call non-traditional students, for instance, males in medical pathways, it's predominantly females. What can we do to target those males? In Ag, it's predominantly males. What can we do to target females and that type thing? So, we try to look as, they were talking about the whole child. We look at the, the whole student body, our community, and what can we do from a CTA standpoint in our pathways to try to address some of those needs that we identify and, and work towards those goals? And our, our monies are all tied to helping us meet these goals. We have to tie these monies spent back to these goals when we request that in our budget each year. Is there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll place this on the consent agenda at the regular meeting immediately following this meeting. The next item is our minutes from our previous month. Those have been posted, and if you have any questions, if there's any changes we need to make, we will review those in a minute. All right. We'll place those on the consent agenda for the meeting immediately following this. Financial report. We have our financial reports as part of the meeting tonight, and you'll see our tentative financials. Our first document is the SPOS. We can pull up that one, that's good. The tentative, July 1, 21 through July 31, 21. Notice it says tentative because that beginning cash balance could change a little bit based on how the system closes out the books and the, the year-end closeout goes. But this gives you a good idea of where we're at, beginning month, cash balance, and then the ending.
Question, um, I forgot to ask before you went on to that. This about the audience having to sign up twenty-four hours before the meeting, that in the minute minutes when they're last signed?
As far as, uh, when we get the folks just paid, you want to discuss that then?
Yeah.
Oh, the minutes, you want to go back to the minutes?
Now, I was wondering with that in the minutes, about the audience participation having to sign up twenty-four hours?
The approval of the policy is in the minutes. When the policy is approved.
They said it's supposed to be voted to be approved in the side those minutes. It has not been consented or voted to be approved. That's what it says in those minutes, right there at the bottom, to be reviewed.
I think it was in the regular meeting, yeah.
It says it's supposed to be consented the next regular meeting, and I think that's this.
That regular meeting is right after the work session, at least at the time. Yeah. So, last month, we had the work session, and a lady, I wasn't here, this was voted to put on the consent again, and I'm assuming that the regular meeting got approved.
And assuming or is it?
Yeah. Let's see. And Ms. Wilkerson, it was stated in the work session, we reviewed approval of policy BCBI, public participation in board meetings, proposed revisions to policy. Public participation in board meetings were presented at the June 24th work session. The board reviewed since that time, the policy revisions have been made available for public review. Board consensus at this work session was to include the proposed revisions in the consent agenda for voted the regular monthly meeting immediately following this meeting. So, then if you go down to the regular monthly meeting at 7:00 PM on 7/22, you'll see in the, uh, let's see. Consent agenda, we have, move was made by Mr. Adam Locke to amend the consent agenda to remove, remove item three, tax digest military rate, and add CMS flooring and policy revision BCBI, public participation, and for the consent agenda with the noted amendments. Second was given by Mr. Gene Wade with unanimous approval. Items on the consent agenda have been reviewed by the board. At the work session, immediately prior to this meeting, it is the recommendation superintendent of the board approve the consent agenda as presented. Consent agenda for July 22, 2021 includes minutes, Twenty-First Century Grant, five-year facility plan, CMS flooring, approval of new policy GBI, teacher evaluation appeal, approval of revision of policies IDE, GR, approval of policy GARH, employee leaving ab, and about absences, and BCBI, public participation in board meetings, and MOU for air academies. So, yes, ma'am, it's reflected in the minutes that policy BCBI was approved.
And was posted for public review as well.
Yes, ma'am.
And by the way, that policy's been posted for the public since June 24th. And an email was sent to all, and the email was sent to all staff that work in the school system of that policy being on review. And it was open for public comment since June 24th.
Uh. All right.
This, this policy complies, I was, I chaired the meeting last month, so I'm going to speak about it. This policy's been, we enacted this policy to comply with the state legislation that was assigned into law in, in July. We had to act on it immediately. So, this was legislation put forward by a gentleman, a state representative, the state senator in Atlanta. It requires public participation to be moved to the regular work session, the regular board meeting, and everything that's in this policy complies with that legislation.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, superintendent.
All right. Thank you. Minutes, we have financial report, the tentative financial report. Ms. Yalor, is there any comments about the tentative financial report?
Um, well, hopefully we'll be closing the FY21 books in the middle of September. So, when we report out at the board meeting in September, we'll review the final financials for June, July, and August at that time. But this is, this is tentative where we, the beginning fund balance as of July 21, we are estimating around twenty-two, one, two, maybe somewhere in there.
All right. If you go to the SPOS report, you'll see the SPOS revenues for the month of July, six-hundred forty-five thousand, six-hundred fifty dollars and sixty-one cents. Our average monthly collections, six thirteen zero seventy-two, forty-one, so, these SPOS is really doing well. You talk again. All right. Are there any other questions? Tax digest, we've got the tax digest and military rate. We have advertised this in the paper. So, we're asking the board to take a vote on the military rate tonight. And I'm glad to say that last year, we did leave the military the same, but this will be the fifth out of six years that we have reduced the military, or whatever it's worth. Thanking the rollback, so we'll be taking the rollback this year. Any questions? All right. Capital outlay application, FY22. We had, we asked the board to approve the capital outlay, outlay application for new HVAC at Ambrose Elementary and Indian Creek Elementary. And the board approved that. We have since found out that American Recovery Act money can be used on HVAC, and it has in fact been approved by the state board, has approved, or the State Department of Education has approved our application. So, the State Department of Education has announced that we cannot mix state entitlement money with ARP money. So, we're going to ask the board to withdraw this application to use state money for our new air conditioner at, at Indian Creek and Ambrose, and we will use all ARP money for that. So, since they won't allow the mixing of the, of the funds, so. Say it again, ma'am. They, you know, we could, we were going to make capital outlay application for this, and we would use SPOS money, and then we would get some capital outlay reimbursement for that. But we would still have to contribute to SPOS money. So, my original plan was to use SPOS So my original plan was to use SPOS or to use, get the entitlement funding and use ARP money, but they'd come back and said we can't use both, so.
So I understand, but so which one are we going to?
We're going to use ARP money, 100%.
Okay.
We won't have to put any SPOS into it. No SPOS we're going to do, it'll all be ARP money, so.
Will we, will we still be able to?
Yes, our entitlement funding just sits in the bank.
It's going to sit in the bank.
It just sits in the bank, yeah, it stays there. So it'll still be down, down the road for us to access. We're not giving up anything. Good question.
Would we have a consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
Just to withdraw that?
Yes, sir. All right. Surplus property. The superintendent recommends board approval of surplus property as presented. So board consensus, the surplus property will be included in the consent agenda for vote at the regular monthly meeting immediately following this meeting. The technology department will present surplus property for board approval. The surplus property, which includes approximately 1,000 Chromebooks. These are old Chromebooks that are no longer viable for the system to use. And then 300 Chrome boxes, which once again are no longer viable. And numerous Smartboards, that's the old boards like we've got hanging there that we bought, going on 20 years ago, some of those, they're, they're at least 15 years old. So it's old, old equipment that can't be used. And so they're asking to put this on GovDeals.
I was intending to ask the question of about that care that the funding that was sitting in for the minority community.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and they asked about them being able to get the internet services for the children that low poverty areas.
Yes, ma'am.
That don't have that.
Yes, ma'am. There is, there is something, we're going to send something out on Monday that deals with that. Logan Evans, our technology director, sent something today that we'll be sending something out to parents that informs them about opportunities for internet access. And so we weren't prepared to send that out yet, but I think it deals with Windstream and Vibe and some funding bailout available. So there will be some information that's sent out to the public about that. All right, surplus property. And these will be put on Chrome, on GovDeals. And I know I'd had somebody ask questions about, about availability of surplus equipment. So these, these Chromebooks will go on GovDeals. And these really, they would not be good for use like on our network, but from what Logan shared with me, somebody could access the internet with them, all right? So they're not suitable for operations on our kind of network, but for simple internet use that doesn't require much, I don't know what you call it, but.
With, with the school system, the infrastructure has to be able to support us using Google Education and that you have to be able to support the programs. We have all of the programs from the IRE to the STAR to IXL that the students use. The older devices won't allow that.
Right. So these will be out on, like I had somebody ask me about, they have two exchange or students that they sponsor, like in Uganda, inquired about if we had any old surplus. So people like that who may have been looking for some old equipment to send to Africa or send to South America or wherever, they might be interested in this, because it might work.
Would that be acceptable, I'm saying, good product for college students?
It might work well enough, it might work well enough for a college student to get on the internet and look on or something.
It would, it would, the only function would be to surf the internet, really. I mean, it would, I mean, if that was the purpose, but that's really the only function. There won't be any software along with it, you know, with the, their problems.
So software that would be able to be down there.
Well, when Chrome, once they, once they, they're, they're end of life and they're not supported by Chrome anymore, then your only function would be to use it for the, you know, just to look on the internet. You couldn't even pull up apps or do anything additional.
So if they had class and their textbook was online?
They would be, yeah, yeah, I mean.
They would be able to, okay.
It will have functions similar to surfing the internet on the phone. It'd be similar to using your phones. I mean, there, there is, they still have some purpose.
All right. Well, with board approval, we'll place these, this surplus and it'll be placed on GovDeals. Salary schedules. We have, are proposing two salary schedules adoptions tonight. The first is the proposed school nutrition pay scale. In talking with the board, we talked about this previously in relation to individual employees and employment and such as that. I know I've had one-on-one conversations with y'all over the years that, especially with the job market right now, we've got, if, if somebody's offered a job less than $10 an hour, it's tough to try to hire them. So this would make sure that nobody in the system is paid less than $10 an hour. So the first one is nutrition. And the starting salary in nutrition you'll see is $11, $10, so nothing less than $10, all right? And this will cause a, because we're going to adjust all of the salaries, schedules for, for all employees in nutrition, there will be a slight increase for all of our nutrition workers.
In the schools.
In the schools. So all of our school-level nutrition workers will get a little increase by adopting this salary schedule. So this will be good for all of our nutrition workers. And it's tough right now to keep nutrition workers. We could use about 16 at least employees right now, so trying to compete with a lot of the fast food.
What about your other employees that are...
All right. The next salary schedule is the pair professionals. We're proposing for the pair professionals that we adopt this salary schedule. And you'll see at the top of it, the starting will be $10. So once again, on this schedule, nothing less than $10 an hour for pair pros.
What did you have?
Right now?
Seven, seven something. I mean, it's above the minimum wage, but it's not a decent salary.
And once again, because implementing this, the only really fair way to do it is to make sure that, that it'll affect all the pair pros. So all the pair pros will see a slight increase from adopting this new schedule, all right?
So the $10 would be the starting rate?
That, that'd be the lowest.
The one that's been in there with the...
That's the lowest. If you've got a high school or a GED or one year of college, you'd start at $10 now. But if you've got a two or three years of college and...
What I'm saying is the one that's been there with the...
That's why we're going to bump them up. We're going to, we're going to bump, everybody, all of our pair pros will be readjusted to go on this scale. So all of them will get an increase. All pair pros will get an increase. So y'all be giving a raise to all the nutrition workers tonight and all the pair pros.
They need it.
Yes, ma'am.
They need it. These are on this.
Yes, ma'am.
Sacrificing their lives out there, what's going on.
Yes, ma'am. All right, and the, so are y'all good? We'll place that on the consent agenda for the regular meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you, this is big. Temporary disinfecting positions. We are going to employ with approval of the board 13 employees for six hours per day for the remainder of the school year. These individuals will report to the principal and be responsible for disinfecting classrooms at all school facilities. The funding source will be American Rescue Plan. So we're going to use American Rescue Plan funding to employ 13. We're going to work with Staffmates. We're going to partner with Staffmates here in town. They, they provide workers for a lot of our industries and they provide workers for the hospital, custodial at the hospital, and they're going to provide us 13 employees to disinfect. That's going to be their job. We're going to have the backpack sprayers and they'll wear the backpack sprayer while they're in, in the building and then they'll also have the dissolvents that go in the spray bottles and they'll be able to use those. But right now we've got teachers, when the kids leave their room, the teacher has to get out the spray bottle and go to spray their room down. What the principals, they ask if, if we can have somebody in the building designated to do that and that, that would take some of that off our teachers. And so this position will do just that. The principals ask for it, so we're going to provide it to them. And so.
So you're saying they will come in after school hours?
They'll be there, they'll be there, the idea is during school hours. They'll be there for six hours, that's the length of the school day. So they'll be there for six hours a day disinfecting. And, but like when kids go to, like at the middle school, when they go to PE or whatever, that they get in there and spray the room and do those kind of things. So get the water fountains, bathrooms, all that.
So the children are still exchanging classes to go to PE and stuff?
They're, they're modifying their schedules. So they're, they're going to move to some modified schedules in different, different buildings. It just depends on which school it is. So the movement has been limited. But, so it depends on which school. So we hope this helps with keeping a healthier environment. And we thought we would call them virus busters. So anyways, all right.
Everybody good with that?
And I am going to need to place that on the consent agenda as we talk through it because this is using federal funds, we'll be using that, the ARC money and felt like at first I thought we'd like to present it, just inform you about it, but realizing that it is ARC money, I am going to ask the board to approve it on the consent agenda. And that way we have documentation of it.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is this, are you just going to keep this open-ended? Is it going to depend on where we are with spread?
Yes, I think level of, level of virus and level of spread. And that's why we're using Staffmates because if we need to end this, it'll, it'll be something that we could end. But I'm anticipating the rest of the school year.
They're actually beginning with it.
Yeah. So, all right.
Can't stop it if you just feel like the numbers, then you got to continue it.
Yeah.
Stop the numbers and go back again.
That's right.
You have to continue to do what's necessary.
And we've got the ARP funding for three years, so we can continue this for a pretty long period of time. All right, audio enhancement system. So we will, we will place temporary disinfecting positions on the consent agenda. You got that, Rob?
Yes, sir.
All right. Audio enhancement system. As you know, we placed the audio enhancement system in Nichols Elementary School when we constructed it. And we also put the audio enhancement system in Coffee High School when we completed renovations there. What this provides is a 360-degree camera in every classroom so that the teacher can, with the push of a button, she can start videoing in her classroom, everything going on in the classroom. It also provides a speaker system that, the speaker system will project the teacher's voice within the classroom. And it's really great technology that our teachers at Nichols have benefited from. It also includes a new intercom system. So it is, not only is it the cameras in the classroom, the audio in the classroom, but it's also an intercom system. So it'll be an improved intercom for all of our schools. So we're asking the board to approve tonight the, the purchase of audio enhancement. This has been approved by the State Department of Education. They have approved this purchase already. It's part of our ARC application that has been approved by the State Department. But now we're asking the board to approve the purchase of the, of the system.
That was already approved, if not have been. But what system was that, that was mentioned last year?
We talked about it last year, but we did not know about this ARC funding at that time. And really, this is a piece that we may not have been able to do if we didn't have this ARC funding. And so because we have this funding now, we'll be able to do it. We saw this, this equipment several years ago at GSVA. Newton family talked about it, gave a presentation. We were really impressed then and, and they, they upgraded it so that with the 360-degree camera in the room, that they have a live component now. So the, the teacher could click on live and a child sitting at home could watch the classroom instruction while at home with the 360-degree camera. So it, they said they can start installation in 60 days in our schools. So we're going to, we're going to move forward after tonight and give them the green light to go ahead and get in our schools as soon as possible, start installing the equipment, so.
Doctor, you're seeing something like that in Nichols later here?
Yes. It's, we have it at Nichols and this is going to allow us to put it in all of our schools. All right. If it pleases the board, we'll place this on the consent agenda. GoGuardian software. We have the GoGuardian software. And what this does, it allows the, the teacher to, to be able to access the Chromebook. So if Dr. Banks is a student, he's on a Chromebook and I'm the teacher sitting up here, I could pull up and see what's on his Chromebook and help him with a problem. I could take over his Chromebook and say, all right, this is the way you do that. And then if, if Ms. Lewis has a Chromebook over there and she's in the class, I could, I could view her Chromebook and what she's doing and I could take it over and help her with a problem. So it gives the teacher the ability to truly work with students on the devices. And so the teachers who have used it were really blown away by their use of it and, and bought this, this software, if you will. And I say software, if you will, because we no longer put it on computers, it's out in the web, so. But it's about $30,000 a year, so it's not a real expensive piece of software, but it does require board approval. And it has been approved through ARP funding also.
Go back to, before, before we leave that, go back to the, the audio enhancement.
Yes, sir.
And I like that, I, I would like to say that in all our schools. But I do want to have an idea at some point, like I asked you earlier about the life expectancy of this stuff and kind of what kind of upkeep we can expect. Not as much from a, you know, just from a nose standpoint, just if we're going to spend this kind of money throughout the school system on these cameras. I want to know how much we're going to need to do in five years, 10 years as far as keeping these things alive. I don't want to go 10 years and all of a sudden wake up one day and all the cameras are, you know, trashed. Just so we've got an idea of what we can expect so we can plan for that, so we can make sure we've got the money to keep this stuff updated and like it needs to be. I, I, you know, when we were putting in one school at a time, it's kind of like when you say, hey, we're going to have the ability now to put it in every school at one time. That means they're going to be the same age 10 years from now as well. And I just want to know what we can expect so we can at least plan for maintenance and upkeep on that system. You know, you got, you got the little remote thing, you know, how long are they going to last? The cameras themselves, the software, where it runs and things.
Yes, sir.
You know, just so we, we can have a plan, you know, of how to keep those things running. Because I know a lot of times you have to...
Where are you on that?
Huh? No, if they want to go ahead, I'm fine with the system. I, I want to get it done. I just would like to know for our own purposes, so that going forward with budgets and things like that, we know that we have planned ahead as far as...
We need to do it set aside.
Set aside whatever, maybe to buy remotes or cameras, what's going to get together.
Yeah, it'll be much like the current video camera systems. We've replaced them along and along and...
I just don't want to wake up 10 years from now and go, oh, well, we didn't plan for this in the budget and we need $2 million to do this. All I'm saying is let's get an idea of what kind of upkeep expense these things are going to be so we can kind of plan that from the budget standpoint going forward.
We will. Good question. All right. If it pleases the board, we'll move forward. So GoGuardian will be placed on the consent agenda also. Out-of-state travel. Out-of-state travel, we have a trip that is asked to pursue, and Rhonda's already left, I hope it's one of the trips she was talking about, but she said in a couple of weeks, so, but we have a group with the FFA, 14 students going to Indianapolis, Indiana, October 24th. This is for the national convention. I did talk with Mr. Highsmith, who's our young farmer teacher, to ask him about the details, and we have two students who will be competing for the national championship in floral culture, so they're gonna be competing for that, and we have others that will be competing, and then others that will be attending the, the conference itself, so we're excited for these young people to be able to go and experience this. This is something we do every year, given the nature of COVID and all this, hopefully they'll be able to make the trip, but I am gonna ask the board to approve it tonight and, and just plan to send them.
How will they be going?
They will be going on activity bus. We've got one of those activity buses that they will drive up there.
Yeah, probably.
They'll be probably one of the sponsors, the teachers. Yeah, so.
I want to do the trip to Indianapolis.
I bet it takes 12, 14 hours to drive all the Indianapolis.
It's probably. Look at how many there's five buckies between here and there. And you had a day to that trip.
Yeah.
Were they considering the situation we're in with COVID and all?
Yes, sir.
Were you talking to them about that?
I did, and, and, you know, they're gonna take precautions and such as that, but, you know.
It's more, I, I mean, I'm not trying to cancel. You know, I had, I was going to the National School Board Association Convention, and they canceled two days before the event began, so it's gonna, it's gonna be on the venue probably. I think we were all, our, the Georgia Coalition was all ready to go, we had all made arrangements to go to Louisville, and they, they canceled it last night.
Do they sign some kind of waiver in case the kid gets the COVID or something? Do we need something like that to go against?
I don't think so. I think it's just school activity and we're sending them, I mean, they're probably safer going on this.
They are. They're probably.
Yeah.
While their parents are left, yeah, they've proved up doing so.
That's right.
Yeah, I don't know if we, you know, the way things are now, we might need some kind of release from the parents, you know.
That's right. We, let's get to it and see if anybody's doing anything, I guess. All right. If it pleases, the board will, will put that on the consent agenda. All right, at this time, we'll move to an executive session to discuss personnel and the hiring of employees for the school system, also the superintendent's evaluation, as well as safety plan for the school system. Can you move the motion?
I'm moving, we have the two executive sessions for the discussion of privacy.
All right, you got two seconds.
All right.
Nothing else on the work session. We're done the meeting at this time, and about five minutes, we'll start our regular meeting. A few minutes.